All right, we're gonna make the beginning. Start with a prayer, all of us pledge. Father God, we look to you this morning. We're mindful of those that are less fortunate, those that are suffering from a hurricane. We pray for direction today for our constituents and us as we make decision. Grant us wisdom. Add to this prayer what it's like, and we pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Appreciate everyone here for the meeting. First item of business for the minute, say we're sent to be emailing all the original corrections. Continue motion.
Doctor. Second.
Motion is second. On favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Payroll number seventeen, calendar year two thousand nineteen, totals two hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty dollars and twenty-seven cents. We had a hundred and eighty claims in the amount of six hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred and two dollars and ninety cents.
Motion to prayer?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Zero. Sheriff, can we ask you to pause? We're gonna write to me.
We know it doesn't matter, but it's Tuesday.
We have a recognition party in the audience. We had asked them to come forward. Ryan? Bring me to the top. Thank you very much, Arwa.
My name's Brian Hall from the Association of Indiana Counties. The Director of Government Relations for the statewide association representing all ninety-two counties. Certainly want to, while I'm here and have the floor, want to thank Wells County for sending so many fantastic county officials to serve not only on our board. Kevin Woodward, Jared Han, both serve on the AIC board, but also Nate Rumschlag and Jared Han serve on our legislative committee as well. So certainly want to thank Wells County for sending so many outstanding public officials to us. Also, the main reason we're here is to introduce Kevin Mitchell from Nationwide Retirement to present a scholarship check to a deserving son of Wells County employee. Kevin?
Well, thank you very much for having me again. Kevin Mitchell with Nationwide Retirement. A lot of people know Nationwide as a very large insurance company. In fact, we're one of the largest agribusiness insurers in the world as well. But we're the number one retirement planning company in the four fifty-seven deferred compensation world. We're experts in retirement, and we certainly like to present a scholarship to someone who's getting their career started in the form of a college. We have a check here for Mr. Brandon Lockwood. I believe his parents are here to accept the check. Brandon, Chrissy Lockwood, you guys come up. Sounds like you got a fine young man. Certainly glad to help get head started.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a quick picture? Absolutely.
Yeah, let's go get it.
Three, two, one. Thank you.
We get one right.
Your AIC board member happened. Thank you. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
That's all I have. Anything from the conference?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Good to see you again.
Thanks for what you do.
Okay, we're continuing on. Are you still on pause? You're up next.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
It's Tuesday, not Monday, but Tuesday, we got ninety-three inmates in jail as of this morning. Forty of those are pretrial for Superior, twenty-one pretrial for Circuit. We have eleven F six and eight DOC currently. Other than being busy, I don't have a whole lot of new news to report building-wise. Think I may have brought up the last time we were getting the both parking lots resealed. The public side really, really needs to be done, but we're squeezing out another year hopefully of sealing that out. Those are both done as of the last couple of weeks, and hopefully by the end of today, the last two boilers at the five that we've been replacing over the last several years will be done. So we had enough funding left in our current budget to do the last two boilers. We were doing one a year, but those, we had enough to do the last two and get done with them, so those will all be done. And won't need replaced anymore, so other than that, we're just plugging away and doing what we can. The numbers have been kinda, they've been up and down from eighty to ninety here in the last couple of weeks, so I have a feeling that might get down a little bit after today. We got a whole bunch of arrests from over the weekend. They'll be going to court today, so we'll see how those get sorted through, but other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Thank you, appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Scott.
Josh?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very similar to the last meeting due to the fact that we're still chipping ceiling and that kind of takes everybody. We are two sixty-seven miles of the ninety-six, so another couple of weeks depending on weather this short week and next, I'm hoping, you know, just depending on weather, like I said. Two, three weeks, we should be done with that. Small structures, everything is pretty much complete. I have one left being made now. Everything else is either here or sitting at the factory rather than transported here, just so we can move it job to job. So actually, a couple of them will be done in Jackson Township this week, and then all that will be left is our bigger box culverts, which takes a little more coordination, a little more manpower, but lacking thereof for chip and seal. I'm waiting a little bit. Had a lot of complaints just with our side ditches. It's just like everyone in the yard, you know, I mean, everyone in their yard, price as much this year, so the side ditches are the same, so we can only do so much. But the next few weeks, we will get back out there and start on those. All our hot mix jobs are now done. They're striped, bermed, done.
And look fantastic.
Yep, yeah, so I drove them all and they all ride nice, and we also did an extension, Nate's Hoosier Highway Project, the curve correction. We then did, as part of all our side, did from the end of that curve correction all the way to two eighteen, just so from two eighteen around that corner is then all new and fresh, rather than having the old road butt up to that new section. So that's done as well. Then once chip and seal is done, it's back-to-back hoe and crack seal and all that stuff for the fall. Everything's on track. We're actually catching up, pushing a little harder on chip and seal since the weather is nice. We've been working over a little bit about every day, but we're to the point to where we should finish actually on schedule, even though starting a month late. So we're just trying to make up as much time as we can right now, so.
Good job, thank you.
Yep. Anything? All right. Keep up some good work. Thank you.
All right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
Quick update on a couple of projects. Bridge three oh three, that's on Thousand South, they're just east of Meridian. The new structure was set back on August twenty-ninth, so if anybody's been by there, you've seen the big concrete bridge getting placed. Backfill and restoration work is gonna be underway. Hopefully in the next two weeks, we'll be able to get that road backfilled, get asphalt in, just a few subcontractors are scheduled. So once that's done, obviously on to Bridge Six on Seven Hundred South will be the next one for them. Hoosier Highway, the curve correction, right now, we're waiting on erosion control. They really need to get the seeding and the straw down for that. They've had to reset all the topsoil after that heavy four-inch rain. We had that one Sunday night really set us back. With rain tonight may complicate the schedule, so I don't want to say officially when it'll be open because I don't know how much rain we're gonna get tonight, and if it's gonna set us back. I have been on the, with the contractor on the phone talking about trying to get it seeded and mulched down prior to that so we don't set ourselves back again. So I will keep everybody posted as that project kind of moves along, but that's really the last thing that's left for us on that, on that job. Item three is Bridge One Eighteen B. That's the one just southwest of Ausian. The existing structure was removed back on the twenty-seventh, and the new structure is actually supposed to be delivered sometime this week, possibly Wednesday, Thursday. They'll get the crane in there and try to get that done. It will be pending on some of the overhead electric relocation. REMC was a little late getting out there, so hopefully they can get their work done today, tomorrow. That way, we're ready to go Wednesday, Thursday, so that's our, that's our schedule for that project. The Ausian Bridges, Mill Street and LaFever, I got a confirmation email today from Primco. They are intending to close those bridges for traffic on September sixteenth. It'll be the Monday after Ausian Days. So they'll close those two bridges, which won't really affect Mill Street, but it will change the LaFever detour that's going on for the Mill Street work. All their work will really access from the west. Traffic can kind of avoid that around down through the neighborhood or come back around. Our goal being that Bridge One Eighteen B would be done the thirteenth, Friday before. There may be a day or two where there's a bit of an overlap, but that'd be just kind of for everybody's information, the schedule as far as timing. I do have item number five, and I think Blake, you've got a copy of the letter. I just recently did a roadway audit with NDOT. They were looking at our inventory of roads, were asking to take some old sections of roads out that they had, or they wanted to get some names corrected in their inventory, which they use for payment of MBH funds to the county. One of the roads in the audit that I found was missing, and it was County Road Eight Hundred East between Five Hundred South and State Road Two Eighteen was not listed in our inventory, so we have not been receiving funds for that road. So to get, to get them taken off, it's real easy. To get them added in, they want a letter and minutes, so this is the letter essentially requesting that. I've signed it. I'm just asking for permission to have one, essentially Blake, to sign the letter, and then once the minutes are complete and official, then I'll attach the minutes with the letter and then send that officially back to NDOT, so.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
And I can't say when they took it out, and it's easier to go through this process now than to go back to when it was officially made a road back a hundred-plus years ago, so we'll just do this. And then the last thing, this week is the Anasim Conference. It's in Fort Wayne, Indiana, so I'm just gonna go up there. I'm scheduled to be up there Thursday and Friday for some teaching and school water training, so I'll be out of the office, but if you need me, I'll be available, YSL. Other than that, do you have any questions for me? Thanks. There you go. Kept that one quick. One signature and just a couple of updates. Thank you.
Sign this letter. Next. Go right to Colin.
Morning.
Morning. To disclose that Mr. Johnson here is joining our law firm. He has a bit of a problem with that. He's joined as of today at Williams. September first was officially ended.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, we're lucky to have him. I don't know why he chose us.
Well, you record us.
There you go. I would perry on behalf of Jeff Runyon. I did not see him here. Oh, there they are, they, excuse me, a whole time. Jeff, why don't you come up here? I called out earlier and I didn't see him, so. I want to make sure everyone has everything in front of them. We sent ahead of time to come with you, the auditor, a survey and a petition to vacate an alleyway that's next door to his house. Does anybody have it?
I've got it on my bill.
We sent out, we have noticed, that was published in the news banner, timely pursuant to statute. We did send out certified mail, which two, joining landowners. Mr. Frayer actually showed them in my office trying to figure out what was going on. He's my man, and we talked about it. He has no problem with it. The next-door neighbors to the north are the Huffman's, is that right? And we sent them certified mail, and as I was reviewing everything over the weekend, I realized that Sharon over here signed for the Huffman's, but she would tell you that she brought it right over to their house and they, they know about it, correct?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so you talked with them about that and, okay. So it's a bit of a hiccup, but I think that that satisfies the statute that we have someone here that has been essentially testified, done exactly that. And the rest of the petitions, I would just defer to what we had filed. I don't think there's any reason why not to do this. No one's using this land. It's shared with the Huffman's, and you're taking care of it. You think it's best that it be vacated, correct?
Oh, yeah.
All right, and there's some other little strips of land around you as well, and maybe you'd come back later on and take care of some other things, right?
I wouldn't mind seeing the street access behind the house vacated, because it is just mowed yard right now with all the lots. It's just a forty-foot strip of land that's being mowed on one half and the other half being farmed.
Okay. And you have a few pieces of property on the section of town, right?
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have for the commissioners. If you need anything from me, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion to the recommendation to vacate.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
Thank you.
I gave Roy a copy of the potential ordinance. I have other copies.
What do you intend to record?
Do we record the ordinance or do we?
I would record the ordinance and maybe the certified mail and the publisher's affidavit.
All right, I'll do that. I'll take care of that.
Won't cost anything. The county can record it, and then you've got your title document.
Sure, all right.
The ordinance?
Yes.
Or any. Twelve.
Ten, dash, twelve.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Wait, may I be next?
I know.
Nice.
Right to the top, right?
Morning. I wasn't gonna say.
We did, you.
I was on call and I was busy.
Oh.
Sunday, I was called out for a situation on offender has mental health issue. So in the middle of the rainstorm, never happens when it's sunny.
No.
No rain or ice.
Nope.
I'm here today, I emailed out the annual report. DOC keeps changing our report forms to the state. This year, because the extension, we're finally going to a calendar year for fiscal, thank goodness. I've waited twenty-nine years for them to do this. I'm begging them to do this, a lot of us. So they did not do a report for this year because they're still trying to figure out the forms going into January. So I, they told us to go back to a form that we would do locally, and after doing this form, I'm going to maintain doing this every year because this is, I think, a more understandable format. It gives you guys everything. I'm just gonna run through it real quick and answer questions. As you go through it, you can tell, you get our agency information, you're getting our advisory board members and all their information. We have our organizational chart for the department. We have our code of ethics, strategic plan. Then we have our goals and objectives that we use for DOC for them to measure and quantify our grant. And part of that process is the evidence-based practices. We were kind of guinea pigs in ninety-six for the state for community corrections for what works, and then it became best practices, and then it became evidence-based practices. So as you look through it, you can tell we are very overviewed from Indianapolis. We had a site audit for the operations of the department in November, scored ninety-one out of a hundred. It was a whole day of them in our office going through files, case management systems, interviewing staff, looking at file reports and everything that we do. They, it was a very thorough, the summary was a twenty-seven-page evaluation, very in-depth. They're doing this in every county. So I'm proud to say ninety-one out of a hundred. I can live with that. So that's good news, at least we're hitting the expectations that they, they were asking us to hit and exceeding in a lot of areas, which was good. And as you can tell, sorry, I'm hitting the mic and making noise. You get into the evidence-based practices section, then after that, we've got the department stats. As you can see, we, we were looking for what was the best breakout of that. Some that, we've had, I think, in the last six years, six different report forms from them, which is confusing trying to get a good baseline on showing the statistical representation, especially when I sit on legislative committee when we're working with the legislature. A lot of that's driven by what they want us to do now, so that's why we've had this kind of floating issue. I would, I would prefer consistency, but you know, every time something happens, someone says, well, let's add this into the equation, and all of a sudden, we get this behemoth of a report that no one can understand. So I went back to basics. Gives you what our offense levels were, the numbers, talks about number of days, juvenile cases. I was advised at the end of the week, today, we're potentially getting three juvenile home detention cases from now through the end of the day. I've got two more coming, cases coming in to take, to go on, so today's gonna be one of our busier days for Monday, Tuesday, as I mentioned, after all of that. Then you've got the last page, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, our number of cases, days, and then financial breakout. We did on the cost comparison for the cost it would be to put them in DOC or jail, a ninety-one-day snippet, because we felt more comfortable with that. So if you want to extrapolate that ninety-one days out to a year, you can multiply that out and see where we're at. The last page is the medical mental health. I thought I'd take a chance this year. We've been doing this since the early two thousand. Judge Goswami, Superior Court Judge at that point, had asked me, said, you know, we allow them to go out for medical, mental health treatment, dental treatment. We're not paying for that because they're on home detention, Blake. Can you track that? So I set out back in two thousand, two thousand one to develop an in-house. We developed it, and then we had our case management software vendor build it into our case management software, so we've been tracking this for an elongated time. These are the physical billables. We actually aren't violating HIPAA, doctor, just saying that, but we actually have agreement with all the hospitals in the area, mental health counselors, dentists. They give us, as part of the confirmation, they had the service, what the billable cost was. So if you take a look at it, in the last year, it was five hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. So that's if they would have been in our jail. The county would have had to absorb that cost in some way, shape, or form. If you go back in the last five years, it's three million, eight hundred and eight thousand, seven, eight, three hundred and eight, pardon, three million, eight hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. And if you go back ten years, we're talking seven million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars that we have deferred from the sheriff's department, the jail site specifically, coming back to the tax base and saying, okay, we have these medical expenses, we have to cover them, and that would have had to come out of the revenue stream somewhere. I'm very proud of the fact that we're one of the few counties tracking this information. I have for years lobbied DOC or Department Corrections to do that statewide, because I think this is a huge number. When you take a look at the, pardon, jails and DOC costs, with our population aging faster than what we thought, the medical occurrences that we're having because these folks are being incarcerated, mental health issues that cause criminal act that then put them into the court system. It's, it's changed dramatically from the early nineteen ninety when I started and Kevin, when you started. We had totally different objective. Now we're dealing with the drug issue, which is now tied into the mental health issue. We've got those that are truly dealing drugs, and we've got those who are trying to self-medicate because of multitude of reasons. It has become a daunting task to try to get a handle on this in every, every community in the state and the country. I'm very proud. I think Wells County is good about addressing these issues head-on. We deal with it directly. We aren't letting it overtake us. In the last six months, we've seen a shift from heroin and cocaine to methamphetamines again, which I'm a little, unfortunately, they, there's a better quality of methamphetamine coming in from outside the country, and it's not as problematic as the heroin and cocaine has been being cut with fentanyl and other items, so.
Well, Blake, my understanding, probably a lot of the audience knows that, but the reason it's shifting back that I'm being told is because the, the fentanyl, and they don't know this, gets actually a bad drug, so to speak, that when individuals start ODing and killing themselves, then they start to become a little more afraid of that, and then they revert to something else, like in this case, the meth.
Yeah, the safer drug classes.
And it goes that way a while, and then it cycles back the other way.
And unfortunately, and that, you know, so we're constantly, it's kind of like playing whack-a-mole at street fair. It just depends what, as you said, Kevin, what the safest drug is that they're gonna strike at.
Right. Right.
You know, I think this is a big part of what community corrections is meant to do. We're supposed to try to keep populations at DOC in the jail down. We're supposed to be able to have these folks do home-based services or base services in Park Center, Owen Center, you name it. So, we're not having to develop those in our jail. Because for, quite honestly, for the jail to have a substance abuse program in it would be quite costly.
Right.
You know, they're not gonna do that on the cheap. So, you know, that's the reason community corrections makes such a good sense for a bracket of these offenders that are not the hardcore dealers.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the person, it's like I, the situation I had this weekend, this person had never been properly diagnosed. Middle of July, she came into a check-in, totally dissociated from everything. We had a CIT officer, curricular finishing technician officer come over from the police department. They said, "Well, it's not drugs. She's not threatened herself." And I just said, "You know, let's have the EMS look at her." So, we called the EMS over, just check her out, because I didn't want to have her leave the building and then walk into traffic. You know, that, when they got there, they said, "Yeah, something's definitely not right." They convinced her to go to the ER. The ER doctor looked at her and said, "Yeah, we got a problem here." They set her up with St. Joe. That person spent about seven, eight days in St. Joe, and she had never been diagnosed manic bipolar. And all these years of being in and out of the mental health system, they've never nailed down. You know, the city, I've talked to the city, they've dealt with her over the last five, six, seven years. They've had the same episodes we're dealing with. And it's frustrating, because what do you do with somebody like that? And unfortunately, they usually end up committing a crime, and they don't get the proper treatment or opportunity for diagnosis until they hit the court system. So, you know, that is becoming a growing part of what our caseload is, which takes a lot more time. You know, I mean, it's, it can be exhausting some days.
Right.
Sure.
Right. Do you, I didn't mean to...
No, no, that's great.
Where you were at on your report.
I was gonna open up for questions, so that...
Well, I'll go ahead and raise the question. I know, going back, we've had some questions raised about us as commissioners. I've spoken to you a little bit about this, and I know that we've talked about possibility of the advisory board, and I know we've been questioned about that. And I think that we probably, as commissioners, share that concern with what's being taken place. And I think probably what, in time, I mean, and we've not really spoken about it, but we have addressed the concerns, and I almost think it might be something that we go ahead and put ourselves on your advisory board to kind of help oversee, something like that.
I would welcome that.
To get a firsthand experience of that. And I think, I don't know, Commissioner Robbins, you've looked into this a little further. I know I'm just kind of touching on the top side of it, but I would go that way. Do you have comments?
Four laypeople appointed by the commissioners, one of which is a minority representative. The three who serve now, basically, I had this written head that Indiana Code clearly spells out the duties of the Community Corrections Advisory Board. And I do have a copy of that statute, if anybody wants to read it later. But, in an article that came out in the newspaper on May 15th of this past year, Mr. Waters stated that he didn't believe the commissioners, until we commit to making a standard to review you and do all the elected department heads together, that they can't evaluate you, but that's not what the committee has been tasked to do. I mean, so as a first step, providing the direction that has been requested by Dr., by Mr. Waters and Judge Antrim, making this change, we would like to terminate the appointments of Greg Waters, Jean Bell, and Susan Campbell from the Community Corrections Board, but we do thank them very sincerely for their service. But believing that there needs to be a change made in the makeup of the board, I would like to make a motion to terminate their service today, effective immediately. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Hold up, favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And being now that there are vacancies on the board, I move that Blake Gerber fill the term of Greg Waters, Kevin Woodward fill the term of Susan Campbell, and myself complete the term of Jean Bell.
I'll second that.
Hold up, favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
So, you've got some new members to help you out.
We'll get some movement.
This has been a very precarious place that I've been put in. I appreciate the attendance, the U3 commissioners, and I thank you. I've been very fortunate in my time to work with excellent commissioners. I will always say this, community corrections in 1988, when the legislation was brought out board, was meant to be an arm of the commissioner. It was meant to be under the executive branch, so that it had the community and public oversight that it needed to have. So, it did not become just another growing bureaucratic scenario. I know there's been questions brought up about putting us under the judiciary. I would urge against that as a director that's been around 29-plus years. I think that sets a dangerous perception. I think this body loses control, and that was the whole intent of community corrections when it was developed in 1988, was it was meant to be a representative of the community truly, and not of the judiciary or some other entity. So, you know, I would...
I appreciate that personally. I think what it does is allows us a little upfront look at it, and I think that's the way we're moving it forward, to be able to judge personally right up front for ourselves, and to be able to make those decisions. So, thank you for accepting that. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
You're fine, just keep going.
And that's, you know, I know there's been a lot of questions raised appropriately and appropriately in the last stretch. I've always worked for you and the people in the community and the taxpayers of Wells County. I've always tried to bring the best quality product for the best price break we can get. I've had it brought to my attention by another body representative that you don't need to have all this stuff. Well, and in that conversation, I've gone, "We can't tell you what the criminal activity's gonna be for the next 25 years." If I could, I wouldn't be here, guys. I'd be making billions, selling to every country in the world, saying, "Hey, I can forecast your crime and where you need to be ahead of it." It doesn't work like that. It's kind of like in the medical profession or in developing houses. You never know what things are gonna pop up on you that are unexpected. So, you have to have tendencies and preparedness for that. And I've always tried to develop a very sensible plan for having the appropriate appropriations of equipment, personnel, services, and we never know what the legislature's gonna throw at us.
We'll be working a lot closer with you now.
And if you have any questions, please, if you guys have a cellphone, call me anytime there, and I, Kevin and Tammy, you know that, I've, you know, I always appreciate when you guys stop in. I have asked the council also to come. I've offered observations, ride-alongs, to let everybody know what we do. And we've had council and commissioners of the past take advantage of that, and I think it builds a better understanding of what we do, too.
I agree.
I agree, for sure.
Great.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No.
You said you emailed that report.
I didn't get it either.
Okay, no.
Did you get it?
I don't recall seeing it.
No, I didn't get it.
I just knew it was on the agenda, but I didn't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I was scrolling through my...
That's what I thought. He sent it, I thought maybe he just skipped me.
Yeah, please send the one from November, too. We had a copy of it. Oh, we have one.
I'll send you the November site audit evaluation, and I apologize, I thought that was sent out in the middle of last week, because Lisa and I have talked about it all day.
No problem.
D...
We may have had a computer issue, I don't know.
Just kidding.
I'm sorry.
You know, I still miss my, I miss the exchange between Pete Cole and Blake Coin Dexter in my days on county council. They were second to none.
Pete always was.
Was awesome.
You kept that on video, right?
Yeah, Pete was funny, because Pete, from here, would forget details, and likely Carolina Farling would be sitting there and going, "Pete, we did this, we went through this last year." I think it was about year three, Pete goes, "Oh, that's that state thing, isn't it?"
Yeah.
And Caroline goes, "Yeah." He goes, "Okay, I had a question."
It was good times. Pete held his feet to the fire all the time.
And I've always walked in that.
I know.
I've always walked in that, because the better I am held accountable, the more informed you guys are, the better we do for the community as a whole.
Very true.
We're hoping to better ourselves.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you, folks. Have a great day.
You, too.
You, too.
That's the last one on the list of the business.
Yes. Bitco Insurance, are you gonna do it? You go ahead.
Excuse me. Bitco Insurance, which is our carrier for workman's comp, has given us awards for year 2018, 2019, February, for our actual excellence for our workman's comps claims. So, there we go.
Thank you.
Keep them themselves safe.
Why did I get to do that?
Because you're just as good at it.
I'm close. Close.
Exactly.
Oh, yes.
I have nothing else.
Nothing else? No. Red light, sign, no. Okay. Kev?
I have nothing.
Jessica?
Again, I will reiterate, no meeting during the street fair.
Open comments, questions?
I'd like to invite the commissioners to the Five Country Festival Saturday. Tammy come, but I don't know where Kevin or Blake have been there or not, but it's a gym in Wells County. It is something that you guys, you come and take in, it's from 11 to 3, Saturday. You should come and take it. It's a nice festival that a lot of people have down there.
Been there.
And they would gladly be through that.
That's beautiful.
Unless you see what the people have done down there. It's unbelievable. You should take time to come down there, and Tammy will be there, I think.
Do my best. Of course, it happens to be the same time as Rory's auction.
Yeah, I know 21 Alive did a special segment on that. It was really neat.
And it's a, so, and it gives you a chance to check out Jack's Bridge, picture behind there.
Yeah.
It's close to it.
Yeah.
It's been working alongside it.
So, you're invited, and the public is here today. It's from 11 to 3, Saturday. You should come and take it.
Five place schools.
Been there.
And they would gladly be through that.
That's beautiful.
Unless you see what the people have done down there. It's unbelievable. You should take time to come down there, and Tammy will be there, I think.
Do my best. Of course, it happens to be the same time as Rory's auction.
Yeah, I know 21 Alive did a special segment on that. It was really neat.
And it's a, so, and it gives you a chance to check out Jack's Bridge, picture behind there.
Yeah.
It's close to it.